Great, and I'm gonna just double check your record to get started. Commissioner Lyons, can you hear us okay? And are you able to unmute?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Alright, thank you sir. Alright, so we'll go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Livingston City Commission on January 7th of 2025 at 5:33 PM. We'll start with roll call, roll call please.
Chair Cale.
Here.
Vice Chair Newt.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Willich.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
You have a call.
Alright, so we'll start this meeting like we do with every meeting with public comments. And this will be for general public comment for items not on the agenda this evening, or any of the items on our consent items list. I'll remind folks that individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. We do limit comments to four minutes. And we will go ahead and start in the room. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make general public comments this evening? Seeing no one in the room, we'll go ahead and go online. Is there anyone online that would like to make general public comments this evening, items not on the agenda, or the consent item? Agenda. And you may raise your hand, or come off mute and give us your name. I'll ask one more time to give folks the opportunity, any general public comment this evening. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close general public comment. And we will go ahead and move on to our consent items. Commissioners, would you like anything pulled this evening?
I'd like to pull A, please.
A is an apple.
Yes.
Alright. Anything else? Alright. I would entertain a motion for B through G.
I'll make a motion. We approve consent items B through G.
I have a motion by Newt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion two. And then, Mr. Willich.
Thank you. I would like to just add two things that I saw that weren't captured in the minutes on page six. It was either before or after I asked who Mr. Lindroff was. I also asked the question about how the grant went from eighty-two thousand and change to ninety thousand and change.
Okay.
And I would like to see that recognized in the minutes. Now, on page eight. I believe after I said the study was thrown data-driven, I did ask the question about what impact the Yellowstone flood and moonlighting had, whether or not that had been captured in the data or had any idea of that yet. And I don't see that recorded in here. I'd like to add those. So however those get added. Just from the thirty thousand.
Mr. Gager.
I understand the changes, and we would be happy to implement them if it's the will of the commission. Great, thank you. I make a motion to-
I actually was gonna pull A also.
Yes.
So I have something to add, if I might before you make a-
Yeah, sure, Lisa.
Um, so after the meeting, I think it was the next morning, Rural Fire Chief Dan Babcock sent the commissioner a really nice letter clarifying some points from Park County Rural Fires perspective on that same, it's the same agenda item that Commissioner Willich brought up. I don't think it's appropriate in the minutes because it didn't happen at the meeting, but I wonder, Mr. Gager, is there a way that it could be included in the packet? Since I think the public would like to see what he said, and I know I found it really helpful in clarifying.
Yeah, we frequently include handouts and other PowerPoint presentations that are performed in meetings. And, you know, because this email was in direct response to the meeting, I'd be happy to include a copy of that.
You were on that email too, right? So you can rate it. Thank you. And thanks also to Chief Babcock. I thought that was a really helpful addition to the meeting.
Yeah.
Really helpful. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Now. Anything else for A? I'll just make sure, anything else for A? Okay.
Do you need amended motion, or do you need a motion in a certain way?
Well, I will need a motion to approve with the changes. I'd like my commission, please.
I make a motion to approve action item A, or consent item A, with the two additions from me and the addition from Chair Newt's.
Second.
Okay, motion by Willich, and a second by Schwartz. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. We have one proclamation this evening. Alright, this is a proclamation of this Livingston City Commission declaring January 9th, 2025, James Earl Jimmy Carter Observation Day in Livingston, Montana. Whereas Jimmy, excuse me, whereas James Earl Jimmy Carter Jr. was born on October 1st, 1924, in Plains, Georgia, and grew up on a family peanut farm in a home that lacked electricity or indoor plumbing, instilling in him an enduring respect for hard work, humility, and service. And whereas he graduated from the US Naval Academy in the top tenth of his class, served in the Navy's pioneering nuclear submarine program, and later returned to Plains to run the family farm after his father's passing. And whereas Carter entered in politics in the 1960s and served as Georgia's governor, and thereafter was elected the thirty-ninth President of the United States, serving from 1977 to 1981. And whereas his administration confronted steep economic challenges, yet advanced human rights, brokered the Camp David Accords, established the National Energy Policy and Department of Education, and worked to restore public trust in government. And whereas President Carter's extraordinary post-presidential years spanned global humanitarian work, travels around the world to foster peace and recognition within 2002 Nobel Peace Prize, reflecting his lifelong commitment to diplomacy and compassion. And whereas having passed away at the age of one hundred, President Carter will be honored with a state funeral in Washington DC, after which he will be laid to rest at the ranch house in Plains, besides his beloved wife of seventy-seven years, Rosalynn Carter. And now therefore be resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I hereby proclaim January 9th as a day to honor the memory of President Jimmy Carter, celebrating his steadfast dedication to the American people, his bold pursuit of peace, and his enduring legacy of integrity, service, and compassion. Mr. Gager.
Thank you Chair Cale. I was not alive during the presidency of Mr. Carter, President Carter. But as somebody who grew up on a family farm that at times lacked the lifters and indoor plumbing, frankly, I'm best by his career, and especially his ability to be married for seventy-seven years. So may he rest in peace.
Yeah. Commissioners.
That was my first presidential election, and I was the other poll to vote.
Wow.
And and I got to meet his his first press secretary, Jody, and I can't remember his last name.
First name basis.
Yeah. It was an interesting character. Yeah, I got to meet him in seventy-seven and how was I? In Virginia somewhere, doing a conference during the summer from break from college. So yeah, what an extraordinary human being. We could all take something by, from his example that he's set forth. Thank you. Are you?
Thank you. Anyone?
Well, I was alive, but I don't remember. Pretty, pretty young in nineteen seventy-seven. But I think what I do remember, at least following his presidency, is his humanitarian aid and the the Catherine Humanity was where he wanted houses for communities all over the world. So certainly a an extraordinary legacy. I mean.
I mean, there's nothing to add. It's said it so well.
Yeah, an incredible humanitarian that we could all absolutely learn something from. So, thank you for including that in our packet. Alright, so we're gonna move on to our first action item this evening, which we do at the beginning of every year, which is the election of commissioner officers. And we're gonna do it a little bit differently this year, and allow commissioners to state if they would be interested in the position. And we will start with chair. And so, love to hear from any commissioner who would be interested in holding that position, and feel free to take a moment to, or say why.
Well, I'll start and say I'm not interested in the chair position. Been there, been there. I'm happy to serve as vice chair. I think I know policy really well, and meetings process really well, and I'm happy to support whoever wants to be in the chair role. Whichever one of you lovely fellows that ends up being, and fellows in the inclusive sense. Any one of you. But I'll break the ice by saying, no, thank you, but I'm happy to keep doing the vice chair role.
Okay, others?
Yeah, I would like to nominate myself for chair. This is my tenth year on the commission, and I haven't had the privilege yet of serving as chair. But that being said, I think it's healthy to change chairs every year, give the new perspective and stuff. And you know, and other people a chance to experience, you know, running the meetings, which, you know, which basically is all the chair does. The chair has no more power than any other commission, or and vice chair as well. And we need to be mindful of that and remember that. But basically, the chair is here to run the meeting and orderly meeting. Let me see, what else? I wanna work on a comprehensive disclosure policy. I don't really, I don't think we have one that really meets our needs, and we've gotten ourselves in some trouble here last couple of years, not directly commissioners, but you know, a lot has to do with the past administration as well. But I think with a good disclosure policy, we can eliminate some of these pitfalls in the future. And I also have issues with like the meetings sometimes, and I'd like to see what we could do about streamlining them and tightening them up a little bit. But for the most part, you know, sometimes we do have huge agendas that there's just no way around it. And I think there's ways that we can come to the meeting more prepared and be a little more efficient. That's what I'll have to say, unless anybody has any questions on me. Are you?
Well, I'd like to take the reins one of these days, but I don't think today's the day. But that being said, I have no issues with either any of my fellows, commissioners in either of these positions. So I it's a I mean, it's a coin toss, yes or no, is what I'm saying. I think we're all confident. So we're all here, Tori's generally here, so see that thing, schedule issue, so. Yeah? No, I'm good with that.
Commissioner Lyons, anything?
No, no interest in any officer positions for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would just say I would love to continue to be chair. I've enjoyed being the chair. I feel like I I enjoy facilitating the meetings every week. I feel like I've helped to streamline those meetings and make them run smoothly. I think we've had a good year as a commission. I'm really proud of the work that we've done, all of us together this last year. I enjoy facilitating the meetings and working with Mr. Gager to put agendas together. And that sort of work, I've worked hard to show up at a lot of different meetings, whether they're city or county, to stay up to date on what's going on, so that I can help to kind of bring that information to Mr. Gager and hear to these meetings every week or every other week. But I, you know, I think that any one of us could do this job, and I appreciate all of us who that we're all here showing up every week, every meeting. So with that, I would say-
I do have a question, I guess. Like, as somebody who's been chair for a couple of years, I think a lot of the meeting length actually has to do with the topics on the agenda. I think that we had some long meetings when I was chair, and we also had some agenda packets that took us close to midnight.
Yeah.
In previous administration, that was beyond the ability of the chair, and it was the same for Chair Hoagland when she was here, chair before me. So I appreciate wanting to streamline meeting, but not at the expense of like, cutting off commissioners at meetings. Like, that's something I think is important. Is that some things need to be discussed in public. And I really do think a lot of it is Mr. Gager's ability to put together a packet in a mindful way, because I've seen some pretty drastic changes from last year to this year in the packets themselves. So thank you for that. I think that that's a lot of Mr. Gager more than the chair. I do think that, you know, the chair keeps it in order if people start swearing on us as they do sometimes, or threatening and all. Obviously, thank you, Chief Hard, and your crew for also helping when things get a little bit spicy. But I just want to acknowledge that I don't I also don't want commissioners to be cut off.
Yeah, that wasn't my-
Okay, like, I agree. I mean, I think like, I think that Mr. Gager gets a lot of credit for the length of our meetings.
Yeah, they have, they have gotten better.
Yeah, I think so. And I think a lot of that, we should yeah, I mean, yes, also the chair, but a lot of that should go to him, because he's the one that ultimately is in charge.
Well, you know my pet peeve is clarifying question.
But I think that we, we need to be able to ask the clarifying questions and-
A lot of this can be asked before the meeting, and should be as well as you possibly can, because we only have so many days with a packet. I understand. It is something I just wanna be mindful of and work towards. You know, I don't have a an answer.
Yeah.
It's something I would like to look at.
Yeah, and I, and I think just to, you know, sort of on that, I think that there are clarifying questions that need to be asked in the public, so that the public understands that. Because I think that that is helpful. I mean, we can ask questions on our own.
Also be part of the deliberative process too. You know, as we're deliberating, hey, you know, I'm bringing this up, this is one, so the public knows and stuff like that.
That's good.
Clarifying, you know, just seems to me like, did we do our homework, or is the agenda just not being put together properly? Or, you know.
I mean, I, I, man.
Yes.
I tend to agree, like, I meet with Mr. Gager every week to get questions answered if there's like background that I don't understand. Sometimes I will say that like, other commissioners bring up points that have me thinking about topics in a new way. So new questions sometimes come to mind at a meeting, or like, if we're given a presentation at a meeting from department heads, you know, and that presentation wasn't in the packet.
That's totally different.
Yeah, so like, I think yeah, I think like, process for me is more important than the length of questions. Like, making sure we have a good public record.
Right.
Appropriate public record, maybe is a better word.
And I would-
So I think we're on the same page.
And I would say that I think clarifying questions are important, because I think that that helps inform the public prior to comments. And so that may help with folks making a comment or understanding something prior to opening things up to public comment.
I will say our meetings have been cut in half in time since I first came on, probably like six years ago. I think we were pushing. I don't know. I don't even wanna keep track, but it was late.
Yeah, it was usually ten.
Yeah.
By thirty-ten, so.
Now we can eat dinner at home.
I wanna make sure that Commissioner Lyons has a moment to chime in on any of this conversation so far.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Cale. I understand, and I'm sensitive to Commissioner Schwartz's comments about meeting length, but I also tend to agree that, I think that, I mean, a lot of times I ask clarifying questions that to a certain degree, I have an understanding of, and I think that it's just a helpful question to be answered for the sake of the public. So I would agree with those statements, that that process of making things as clear as possible in the meeting time can be really helpful for just bringing, making sure that everyone knows what, what's involved in the decisions, and what's involved in our deliberative process. So I, I think that there has been progress made in the three years that I've been on the commission towards streamlining our meetings. And I appreciate the efforts of both chairs that I've served under, as well as Mr. Gager. So I, I think that things are heading in the right direction, and I also am, you know, I'm I understand Commissioner Schwartz's concern, because I think that something that maybe we hasn't been said yet tonight is the fact that long meetings can be exclusionary for folks. Like, you know, some, some folks just literally do not have the the health to, the ability for, for lots of reasons, to stay up as late as we're going sometimes. And I think that that's like an accessibility issue, that that's a concern to me. So, all that is to say, like, I, I, I agree with the sentiment that Commissioner Schwartz shared, and I also appreciate the efforts that have been made thus far to improve upon that issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Anything else?
I guess the one thing I would add that stands out that we didn't talk about, that you brought up, Commissioner Schwartz was, you called it a disclosure policy.
Yes.
One of my, like, three topics on my platform running for office is transparency in government. And so, that is important to me. I, you know, do get questions that I can't answer from the public, and I think a simple disclosure policy could be really helpful to protect our whole community, because we represent the community, and that's like, when we make decisions, that's as impacted as like, all taxpayers in the city. And so, that's on my mind, and I think that's you know, something I'm on board with. Yeah, thanks for letting me speak to that.
So let's go ahead. Do I have a motion or a nomination from folks?
I make a motion to one Schwartz as a chair, and moves the news as vice chair.
Okay, I have a motion to make Quinton, Commissioner Schwartz as chair, and Commissioner Newt as vice chair. And a second by Willich. Roll call please.
Well, did we want to make all nominations before voting, or?
Maybe we should, because I know that it sounded like there was something else coming on the phone. So yeah, yeah. So there's, so I have-
You have an active motion.
I have an active motion.
But you don't have to vote yet, you can let Tori.
Okay, so Commissioner Lyons.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna make a motion to nominate Commissioner Cale for chair. But I, I figured we would do this one at a time for chair and vice chair, but I guess only one person expressed interest in vice chair, so that one seems foregone. But for Commissioner Cale as chair, and Commissioner Newt as vice chair.
Okay, so I have a motion with a second. I have another motion. Do I have a second on that motion? Okay, that motion dies.
Yeah, see, yeah, to me, this just makes a little more sense than, you know, than it's like the first motion made, you vote on, and then, you know, somebody else that's interested doesn't get a chance to-
Yeah, but I mean, you can, you can second, like he made a motion.
Right.
If you want to also. We can also have a conversation before we vote. Because there's still a motion, and it's active.
It's an active motion.
So we can still talk.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as the chair goes, I'm just going by what's written in the packet.
Okay, so how about that? So we have your motion, we have Schwartz's motion with a second, Lyons made a motion, a second Lyons.
So we have two motions.
Yeah. So.
So now we can talk.
Now we can have, yeah, so deliberation.
I'm interested in hearing more from the two of you, because you were the ones that are the most impacted. I don't know about others. Other commissioners, but
Okay.
Because it'd be nice if we're all moving in the same direction.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And I think we are.
No, I think that we totally are.
For the most part.
Yeah.
We do have a very good commissions deliberative and stuff like that, and and, and things like that. I, you know, during ten years of experience, or nine years of experience to be a chair, wanting to be a chair, and have served vice chair for, I think, two years, the role, maybe just one, I can't-
At least two, I think.
At least two, so. But, you know, there again, I really, really wanna stress the the duty of the chair and vice chair is to run the meeting. We don't set the agenda. We shouldn't, you know, by any means. That's the role of the city manager, getting things down agenda. We know how that process works too, but with a motion on the side of, and so I'd wanna keep those lines of communication. You know. Open and stuff like that. And and this disclosure policy that we really need, we've like I said, we've gotten in trouble here, where it could have cost, you know, taxpayers a lot of money, unfortunately. We're skating by, and something we've been remiss in. And we really need to take a strong look at it. Other than that, there's really not that much more I really can say about the position, except that we all have the same amount of power, regardless of title, and that's very important to me, that we maintain that. That's it.
Okay. Well, I would say, you know, obviously, you know, Commissioner Lyons or Commissioner Schwartz, you're talking about the disclosure policy, and I completely understand that. Again, that would be something that could be handled by and brought to the forefront by any commissioner, whether it was a chair or a vice chair. You know, that could be put onto an agenda by two commissioners at any time.
And that's why, yeah.
Yeah, right, absolutely. I do think, you know, as we've discussed, you know, I think that I do facilitate a good meeting, and that is like the main job of the, the chair is to do that. I also think, you know, I, I, I've tried very hard to educate myself more on what it is to be a chair, or what it is to run the meetings. I've also worked really hard to attend a lot of the meetings within the community, to make sure that I'm showing up, showing up at county meetings and city meetings, so that I'm aware of what's happening within the community, and sort of being a presence of the city commission. Obviously, I only represent myself and not every one of us, but I feel like I bring that to this table, which is really important, to bring those perspectives. And I think that that's helpful as the chair, and I feel like I've tried to kind of bring that information to Mr. Gager as well, as we've worked through things over the years to make sure that he's up to date on what's happening, and knowing about those things that are happening throughout the community. And so I think that that's one of the reasons that, you know, I think makes me a good chair. And I enjoy the work. I mean, I really do enjoy being here and doing that, and leading us through these meetings. And I'm really proud of the work that I've done this year. But, you know, I think But, you know, I think what's made this a great year is every one of us at this table and Commissioner Lyons on the phone. Because I think together we have done some incredible work and will continue to do that.
Then also, it brings up, um, I do have the time to devote to it, being retired. Don't feel like I'm retired, but I am, I do, I don't have a nine to five job. So I, I do have the time and the opportunity. Without restricting, restriction to be chair.
I guess if we're deliberating, my point of view is this, that there's no impediment on your character. You've done an excellent job over the last year as chair. And I believe the year before that is vice chair, co-chair. And then Commissioner Newt was co-chair and, or vice, or excuse me, chair and then co-chair. And you've been a co-chair, but not a chair. And so I'm just looking at it as progression. I mean, he's been here for ten years, you know.
With your oppo- uh, opportunity for you down the road, that's why I like.
Right, you is to keep
Changing.
Moving through, keep changing.
And, and changing once a year, it's, it's healthy, I think, you know, refreshing, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's, yeah, you know, the role.
My whole opinion on it is just, it's just changing over and changing into another pair of pants.
So we'll let Commissioner Lyons, any? Commissioner Lyons, any further thoughts?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I, I understand the the interest in giving someone else an opportunity, but I also have observed in, in other work in my life, kind of the, the helpfulness of institutional knowledge and that's not to discount Commissioner Schwartz's institutional knowledge in his, his tenth year on the commission. But I, I just think that Chair Kale has been doing a phenomenal job in terms of running meetings in, in difficult situations and maintaining really impressive composure in those difficult situations. And, and I would also argue just providing impeccable leadership through, through a tough time. So I, while I would be perfectly happy to see Commissioner Schwartz come into that role with Commissioner Kale still interested in it, I think that she can maintain momentum in, in the and continue to provide that impeccable leadership that she's shown over the past year that I have so much appreciated. So, um, my, I, she has my most confidence and, and I would be I would be, I would feel most comfortable with her continuing in that role. I yield.
This is my turn.
That's your turn, yes ma'am.
I feel like my experience is informing how I'm thinking about this, having been sitting at most seats at the table now, after like six years, I think I've been. Like on, so I'll say on one hand and on the other hand, like on one hand, I know Chair Kale and I, we've talked about how it takes like a year to really like figure out the chair role. It takes a minute. That's real. It takes a while to like get the hang of things and understand all the rules if you're not like studying outside of commission land. Process things. It takes a while. On the other hand, I'm thinking, you know, Commissioner Schwartz, you've been on the commission a long time and nobody expects commissioners to run at all for office, let alone one term, two terms, or being appointed and then running two terms like you have. And so you've put in a lot of time. And this isn't the first time you've wanted to be chair. I also have the benefit of time because I've seen you also in really contentious meetings over the years, pre- previous administrator with different commissioners besides the two of us. And I also know you're capable of holding your composure and showing leadership in any chair that you sit in. So I, I feel confident that you could do that as well, because I've seen that in you, because I've also seen you chair meetings in those situations when previous Chair Holgland was out. One thing I like about our form of government is that we don't have a mayor. So one thing I really like is the flexibility and the nimbleness of commissioners. And that's kind of what I'm thinking about, and I'm also honestly thinking about how much both of you mean to me, because I really appreciate working with both of you. And like whatever I say, I feel like somebody's feelings are gonna be hurt and I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. Because it's not personal, it is personal because it's our community. So everything we do here is personal. And you're, this is your time and it's all personal, because you both want this and it means something. So I apologize in advance to both of you. I feel like the weight of being a female in this space right now. But, but I will say one thing I really think is true about being a commissioner is nobody knows what it's like to sit at this side of the table until you have to sit at this side of the table. And even more so, I would say that's true for the chair role. That nobody knows what it's like to be chair. And you are, for better or worse, also the punching bag of the commission when the, when the community is mad. And so I don't know, you guys are on the same election cycle. I don't know if you're gonna run for office again. If you do, I don't know if you're gonna be elected. And so for the benefit of our community, I almost feel like it's good to switch it up and it's not have, it doesn't have anything to do with you. Because I think you're doing a fine job, but also I think it's like people don't know what it's like to be in that chair, and you know that until you're in that chair. And there's good things that comes with it, but there's also a lot of stress that comes with it. And I think that like spreading that out among commissioners too can be like more sustainable and also equitable, to use Commissioner Lyons's language, you know, like more equitable, like when we share the wins and we share the burdens and mixing up the chair is also another way to like share who's carrying the weight of that for the whole commission. So that's kind of, I'm leaning towards Commissioner Schwartz just to change who's in that chair. Because I know that it's not all easy either, and I know we feel that, like I have felt, so, yeah.
Yeah, oh, it's hard.
Yeah, it can be hard. And so I, um, but again, like, I just want you to know that's nothing like.
Oh, no, I don't.
I'm like, I respect you. But that's kind of why I'm thinking of like mixing it up, kind of like to what Commissioner Willich was saying. So that's where my head's at now.
I think that whatever, whatever the note is, I think that this community is very lucky. That's what I think. The thing that they're like, well, I think that.
Lucky to be.
Yeah.
Where we are.
Yeah. So, okay, so let's, um, any other thoughts, deliberations? Okay, so we have two motions on the floor. Um, and I think we can just vote on one motion at a time. That's what we need to do. Um, and so the first motion that we had was the motion to elect Commissioner Schwartz as chair and Commissioner Newt as vice chair. And so that will be the first motion that we'll vote on.
Actually, I think, no, I think like you're gonna go backwards, I think so, but we should get clarity from.
Mr. Gager, could you assist?
I, a- as you know, I love parliamentary procedure and so, you know, in, in the classical school of thought, there is only allowed to be one motion on the table at a time.
Okay.
So one.
Classical parliamentary system, okay. Great.
Thought in the, the Roman classic sense. So, um, one may interpret, then the commission may interpret the second motion, Chair Kale's motion as an amendment to the first motion. And so in that sense, we would deal with the amendment first.
Thank you. So.
Thank you, Professor Gager.
So we will, so let, yeah. This is awesome. Okay, so let's be, I want to be very clear what we're voting on then. So we are gonna vote on the amendment to the emotion. So the amended motion would be Commissioner Kale as chair and Commissioner Newt as vice chair.
That's correct, to amend the underlying motion, yes.
Okay. So we're voting on that. That motion. Okay. So I will ask for roll call.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Newt.
Against.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Against.
Commissioner Willich.
Against.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Okay, so that amendment dies. So now we will vote on the initial motion, which was to elect Commissioner Schwartz as chair and Commissioner Newt as vice chair of the Livingston City Commission for 2025. Roll call please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Newt.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz, or Commissioner Willich, or Commissioner Lyons.
For.
All right.
Can I just say how much I appreciated that educational bit? I never understood why the order was like that. Super helpful.
Like, I, I love that stuff.
But now, the reason that I, but now I'm gonna remember it better, because like, it didn't make sense.
Yeah, now knowing that, yeah.
You should be a city manager.
Or something like that. Okay, so just sort of like as my last act here, so what we will do is we will change seats.
I would, let's defer on that.
Okay.
And the gavel, you're plugged in over there.
Okay, but do you wanna take?
Yeah, he wants to take the meeting and the gavel.
Take the meeting.
Okay, maybe the gavel.
Deal with seats next.
Okay.
Meeting.
Do you want a computer so that you can, okay. So we will.
One more thing to go.
Okay. Are you gonna throw it? No, I'm not gonna throw it. She's.
Thank you.
Here you go, sir. Yeah, the final bang, final bang. All right. Okay, so Chair Schwartz.
Hey, moving on. Moving on to action item B. Action, action arising from Montana Sixth Judicial District Court approving Discovery Vista LLC major subdivision application. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. The item for the commission this evening is an item resulting from a November fifteenth, twenty twenty four decision and order that was issued by Montana Sixth Judicial District Court. And as the chair noted, this is related to a major subdivision application that was submitted by Discovery Vista LLC in March of two thousand and twenty-two. And to provide the, the commission and the, the community a, a bit of background, that application was heard by the, the city's then planning board, which approved it subject to certain conditions. And the application was advanced up to the city commission and, and heard during its May seventeen, twenty twenty-two meeting. However, the city commission actually never took up the item of the, of the subdivision. The conversation began with discussion of a requested variance that was not approved and discussion never moved on to the actual subdivision application itself. And for various reasons, my predecessor, the city attorney's predecessor and others never notified the application, or excuse me, the applicant of the, of the outcome of their application. And so for the community who is following at home, probably the most pertinent sentence in the thirty-seven page decision that is included in the packet appears on lines six and seven of a hundred and thirty-four, page hundred and thirty-four in the packet, which states, because the governing body did not issue any findings of fact, the court concludes that the city acted in a manner that was arbitrary, capricious, and unlawful. And again, that was decided November fifteenth by the Sixth Judicial Court here in Livingston. And so we are here today to comply with that order and, and approve the subdivision with conditions. Myself and the city attorney spent a day in December mediating with Discovery Vista's team. And the approval letter that is included in the packet is the result of those negotiations. And in, in essence, the subdivision is approved. And a separate settlement agreement was for the commission on the consent calendar for consent agenda. You folks approved that earlier this evening. That agreement includes the six twenty letters, excuse me, the approval letter that's, that's attached. It goes the preliminary plat map that's also attached to the staff report. And so that is what we'll be approving. But the, the settlement also include a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment to Discovery Vista LLC. That payment will come from the city's insured, the Montana Municipal Interlocal Authority, and will not be paid directly from taxpayer funds in Livingston, or rather it will be, be paid as, as part of our insurance coverage. We have opportunities to further mitigate any indirect impacts of that, of that cost to taxpayers. And myself and staff will, will work diligently to do so in the coming months and years. And so I will stand for any questions the commission may have.
This is basically something that we have to comply to. I don't know that any needs for clarifying questions? But at this time, I would entertain them. If anybody has a clarifying question on this process. But why is that, entertain a motion?
All move to comply with the November fifteen, two thousand twenty-four decision and order issued by the Montana Sixth Judicial District Court and direct the city manager to approve by a letter, excuse me, by a written letter, Discovery Vista LLC's two thousand twenty-two major subdivision application subject to the mediated conditions.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Motion by Newt and second by Willich. We're now open up for public comment. Any public comment in the room? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. And give it four minutes. There's no public comment in the room. Any public comment online? Please feel free to come off mute, raise your hand. Or raise your hand to be recognized. Being done. Public comment is closed. Commissioner deliberation. Commissioner Kale.
Thank, I think, Mr. Gager and Attorney Hux for your work. For me, doing mediation. I think you all did an excellent job working through these issues. I know that the ask initially was a lot larger and you did your due diligence and mitigated as best you could for this case, so I appreciate that. Thank you. All yields.
Commissioner Newt.
I I guess I have, it's a kind of a clarifying question, sorry. It's not so much about this, but Mr. Gager, do we have better processes in place just for the benefit of the public to know that this kind of oversight wouldn't be likely to happen again?
Yes, certainly. We have changed our internal processes and you may recall a, a discussion that we had several months ago related to chapter two and specifically section two dash fifteen of the Livingston Municipal Code with, which dealt with warrants and, and voting, and we had a very detailed conversation at that. warrants and and voting. And we had a very detailed conversation at that time about what would happen if, um, uh, a motion didn't achieve the three votes required to either, uh, pass it or defeat it. And as I explained at that point, you know, it would be prudent for the the manager to bring the item back before the commission. And so um, that that would be the protocol moving forward. Um, quite honestly, I'm I'm at a loss to to explain why the the prior city manager and city attorney did not take that step and bring the item back before the commission to to achieve those three required votes. Um, but rest assured that while I'm here, that that would happen.
And then the point about the letter, you pulled up the arbitrary and capricious being related to not sending the the letter to the applicant. Do you have a better internal process or a internal process in place now where that wouldn't happen again too?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. I think that's good for the public to know. Um, yeah, I agree. I appreciate both of your work on this and um, moving something forward to conclusion that was inherited by the current administration. So thank you. That was my question. I yield.
Commissioner Willich. Really, the only thing I can do with this is, uh, thank Mr. Gager and his team for cleaning up messes. And I think all of this was, um, would be the best possible outcome. So well, that's possible outcome, but, uh, given what we had in front of us, that's possible outcome. So thank you again for this and, um, yes, we know what to look forward, watch out for in the future for taxpayers and the people of the city of Livingston. I yield. Thank you.
Um, yes, thank you. Mr. Hassan, Mr. Gager for, um, the work you did on this and, uh, you're playing a really, they've taken us to cleaners, I think, on this. And we're lucky. I'm, I I think we shot ourselves luckily, lucky that they did. And, uh, because everybody ends up having to pay for this and, uh, so, yeah, and and knowing that we do have safeguards in place, you know, for the future that, you know. Hopefully this will never rise again, at least not while I'm the commissioner anyway. So thank you, um. Any other questions?
Commissioner Lyons.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, Commissioner Lyons, I'm sorry. Gee. It would help if your mug was up there. Commissioner Lyons, can you hear me?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank, thank you, Commissioner. There's no further discussion. Roll call please.
Chair Schwartz.
For.
Vice Chair Newt.
For.
Commissioner Cale.
For.
Commissioner Willich.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion varies. Um, that's it, um, the official business of this, um, are we still, um, going? We have no closed session um, today. Well, with that, um, entertain, uh, comments from the city manager.
Thank you, commissioners. I am excited to see what twenty twenty-five brings to the city commission and a new chair and uh, well, the the same vice chair that we've had. So I look forward to working with all five of you in twenty twenty-five. Thank you for the opportunity.
Commissioner Willich. Um, happy new year and looking forward to working with you five and the city manager and his teams and working for the best possible outcomes for the city of Livingston. Hurrah.
Commissioner Lyons.
Uh, yeah, happy new year to everyone. Um, wanted to let everybody know that December, the month of December, was the warmest December ever on record in the city of Livingston, going back, record going back to nineteen forty-eight. Uh, it was eleven point four degrees warmer on average than normal. So, uh, happy to see the snow in the winter finally arrived.
Thank you, Commissioner Cale.
Thank you. So I will piggyback off of what Commissioner Lyons said and, um, congratulate the plaintiffs in the held v. Montana trial that, uh, decision was upheld by the Montana Supreme Court right before Christmas. So um, as we talk about climate change and, um, the things that affect that, I am very proud of those youths that put themselves on the line, um, to move that case forward, including, uh, a local, uh, young woman here. Um, so I'm really proud about that. Uh, the twenty twenty-five Montana Legislative Session started on Monday. Um, so I think that that, I know that Mr. Gager is, um, keeping track of that. It's something I'm keeping track of as well. Um, and suspect that there may be some places that we could um, participate as Livingston and the and the Livingston, in the Livingston, in the legislative session. And I hope that we will, um, consider that, um, as the session is forward. I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Cale. Commissioner Newt.
Thank you, um. On that note, Mr. Gager, will you be bringing us pertinent items that might be related to the session for us, for consideration?
Yes, and in fact, we, uh, had intended to have a conversation at the next meeting when we'll have a full membership. Um, we not only have that conversation to have, but we also have the, um, the board appointment conversation as well that we were reserving until we had the full membership present.
Thank you. Um, I would say thank you for your interest in the chair, both to Chair Schwartz and former Chair Cale. Um, I appreciate both of you and your willingness to serve. Also, thank you for your last year of service. I don't know if we thanked you enough for that, but thank you for the last year that you've given to the commission in this seat. I personally know that it's a lot as I, I don't think it can be overstated. Um, so I want to make sure that that lands with you.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, also the seating arrangements, just as I said that I am a process, I remember the details. You'll have to determine the seating arrangement with it, which I think you informally did by the way you called on us, but you'll have to clarify that probably
Yeah.
where we sit. Um, thank you all for a good meeting. Looking forward to twenty twenty-five. I yield. And also the weird seating arrangement is totally making my brain.
It was only for
I know, but I keep like looking. I keep like doing this thing where I'm like looking and I'm not sure what. So thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Newt. Um, thank you for, uh, the confidence you've stowed on me for to be chair for this next, um, for this next year, um. Please feel free to offer any critique, criticism, um, of my job because I'm going along.
Sorry.
Because I mean, you're only as good as, you know, the people around you and, you know, inform you, hey, you know. We need to do things differently. One thing I would ask, um, Commissioner, uh, Mr. Gager, um, committee appointments, if you, is there any way that you could send those out? Um, what's, who's on what and what rep? Harry and I went through it a little bit today and I can't, I I think there's like four boards, five boards, uh, officials sit on or something like that. So, um, in case anybody's interested in in being, changing, whatever they're on now, to doing something different. There again, I think sometimes change is good too, a fresh perspective on a board. So um, with that, um, it would, uh, entertain a motion to, um, adjourn the meeting.
So I guess.
So move.
Okay, we have some, all in favor?
I know.
It's in city commission concludes at six thirty. Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Cool.